Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're just going to get started in a minute, so I'd ask you to maybe make your way to a seat, please. Thank you. We'll get started in a second. Thanks. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming to this special meeting. Very pleased to be at this venue where we can accommodate such a large crowd. And thanks to each of you for coming and showing that you care about our community and that you're here to get answers about some of the questions that have been asked over the last number of weeks. I do want to say special thanks to E.L. Crosley for allowing us to use this large venue for this special meeting. This is a council meeting, so in a few moments I'm going to be opening that council meeting, declaring we have quorum, and we have a few motions that we have to do. Following that, we're going to hear from representatives from KPMG, and they are going to, we understand, answer community questions about a parkland over dedication and a development charge agreement. And I understand that they may also present some other financial information too as requested by council. Then, following that, there'll be a bit of a break, like two minutes, as they switch cables. And Theresa Quinlan, the new treasurer for the Town of Pelham, will give us a presentation, an update on the town's financial position, and some recommendations for council to move forward. This was always going to be part of our 2018 budget process, but again, because of community questions, Ms. Quinlan will be presenting some of those answers and her recommendations tonight. Now, this is the first time that council or I have seen any of this. And you're seeing it for the first time, too. So the plan is to simply receive the information and direct staff to make them the information publicly available via the website and other venues. This session is also being broadcast over the Internet and will be available for viewing on the town's website. Now, some folks have asked questions and said, "How do we ask questions tonight?" Well, I think you'll be pleased to know, the reason you want to ask questions is to get answers. And so that's what tonight is. Tonight is an evening of answers. So, you see, there were questions in September about a parkland over dedication and a development charge agreement. The community asked for an audit of all transactions related to that matter. Those answers in that audit will be presented tonight. The community also asked questions about the financial positions of the town, information about debt, reserves, and expected revenue. And I understand that answers to those questions will be presented by our new treasurer. Further, I understand that KPMG received many questions from the community via a direct and special email address that went only to them. I understand that they kept that email address open even after the October 17th deadline and well into November. And I am told that those questions and their answers will be included in the KPMG audit report when it is released over the next couple of days. Again, neither I nor council know what those questions were, and we're looking forward to the answers as well tonight. Now, some may feel different emotions coming into the meeting this evening. Some people want to take action because of those emotions or say things to increase the emotions of others. Sometimes I feel the same way when dealing with new information or trying to make sense of things. Yet, like me, I'm sure you've found that the best way to handle new data and new information is to consider all the facts, let cooler heads prevail before taking action. So, because this information is new to council, too, council and I will need to review the information before we act upon the facts for the benefit of the entire town. So no decisions will be made tonight. The only recommendation that we have before us is to receive and to make the reports available publicly. I do need to make a note about decorum. There are several hundred people here this evening who want to hear and see and understand the presentations and the answers that are going to be provided. To achieve this in the best way, we need to maintain proper decorum so everyone can see and understand the information. If things get out of hand, councillors or the presenters may ask me to end the meeting. Obviously, we don't want to do that. We want to proceed. We want to make sure that we get the answers to the questions that you and other members of the community have been asking. So I greatly appreciate your help and patience in maintaining decorum this evening. As Pelham continues to grow and flourish, councillors and I are more committed than ever to respect our responsibilities, to keep working hard to manage growth and the town's finances, and work together with the community for the benefit of the town and improving our town. That's what we're here tonight for. So I want to thank you for being here tonight. And now we'll officially begin the meeting. So ladies and gentlemen, I see that we have quorum, and I call this Special Meeting of the Town Council to Order. It's been moved by Councillor Durley, seconded by Councillor King. Be it resolved that the agenda for the November 29th, 2017 Special Meeting of Council be adopted as circulated. All those in favor? Any opposed? None. Motion carried. The next formal item that we always do with all of our meetings is Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Do any members have any conflicts of interest they need to declare? So that was none. Thank you. That should be noted in the minutes. Now we'll move to the agenda for the evening. Oh, the clerk reminded me I needed to tell you this. I'm sorry. I neglected to say this earlier. There are emergency exits which are marked on either side here and here and in the back. Washrooms are through the doors to the left and left across from the gym. Okay, thank you. So that's the housekeeping. Now we're going to turn over to the first presentation, which is by KPMG. We have Karen Grogan, who is the Senior Vice President of Forensic Audit at KPMG Canada. We also have Taylor Ravel and Bruce Peever. So if you could proceed to the podium and begin the presentation. Thank you very much.
So, we were initially going to be coming here to speak solely about the East Font Hill Development Project. So that is what our title is listed as. And I'm just going to walk through what our overview of tonight will be. So with respect to the East Font Hill Development Project, we're going to go through an introduction, why we were retained to look at it, the scope of review, the information that we looked at, people we spoke to. We'll go through some of the limitations with respect to our findings, and we'll go through the background of the East Font Hill Development Project as well as a timeline of events specific to land transfers and purchases. And then we'll go into some more detailed findings. And, as I said, we'll be speaking further with respect to the September 5th presentation that was commissioned by Daniel &amp; Partners, LOPE, in contemplation of litigation with an identifiable individual and presented in a closed meeting. And due to public request, we are going to present some of our financial findings within this presentation. So again, KPMG was retained on October 6th, 2017 due to public concern over some of the transactions with respect to the East Font Hill Development Project. Specifically, we were told there was concern over the price paid for land, the issuance of municipal credits, the buyback of municipal credits. And, again, as you were given the opportunity to provide questions... I can't. Okay, sorry. Sorry for being short. Okay, so we were also retained to receive questions from the public and address those questions anonymously. So, in performing our work, we reviewed and analyzed policies, bylaws, and other legislation. We reviewed communications and emails. We reviewed documentation including minutes, approvals, resolutions, appraisals, and purchase and sale agreements. We also reviewed information and comments obtained by the public that emailed us at our KPMG email address. We also interviewed employees of the Town of Pelham and some other third parties. Specifically, we had discussions with representatives of the town: Barbara Wiens, Director of Planning and Development; Charlotte, Deputy Treasurer; Darren Otway, the Chief Administrator Officer; Nancy Bizotto, the Clerk; Theresa Quinlan, Director of Corporate Services and the Town Treasurer. We also spoke with third parties. We spoke with Callum Sheddin and Sarah Draper of Daniel &amp; Partners. We spoke with Dave Allen of Font Hill Gardens. And we spoke to his lawyer, Thomas Richardson. Now, I just wanted to point out some things in advance here with respect to limitations. We have not held any discussions with current or former elected officials or former employees of the town. We have not reviewed every single piece of documentation at the town for the period March 2014 to November 2017. We have been provided with minutes specific to the areas we were reviewing. We haven't looked at every set of minutes that were available during that period of time. So, as a background, the town adopted an official plan on April 2nd, 2012. The official plan included a secondary plan for an area known as East Font Hill. As part of the development of the East Font Hill Development Project, the town entered into agreements with various parties, including Font Hill Gardens. The secondary plan describes a greenland system which consists of linked natural heritage features, public parks, trails, and stormwater management facilities. The town required excess park and road dedications from Font Hill Gardens in order to execute the secondary plan, which required connection from the historic downtown to the East Font Hill lands and the acquisition of parkland for public use. The town's development included planned construction of the Pelham Community Center with a budget of approximately $36 million. In order to execute the secondary plan as contained in the official plan, the town required excess road dedications from Font Hill Gardens. So what we wanted to do was go through the timeline of events that took place of the transfer of property and purchase of property. Just to, maybe, Tyler, if you can point out on the screen...
So, sorry, I think I just got to my mic. Just to add a little bit of context in terms of some of the images we'll show tonight, just so people have a little bit of understanding about the actual parcels of land and the land that's being discussed in terms of the parkland dedication and the road dedication from Font Hill Gardens. We have a couple small images that we took essentially from... Well, this first image was taken from the town official plan that Karen just referenced. And so this is a schedule to depict, conceptually, what some of the lands would look like in the secondary plan in East Font Hill. So if I could just draw your attention to this area here, you can see there's a roundabout with a road that runs from west to east and then in a northeasterly direction. So, just to move to the next slide here, it's a little bit difficult to see on this image, but right about there as well. It's a road known as Summersides Boulevard, which we understand was originally known as Ceremonial Road, just in terms of reference in town documents. And so there is a piece of road that runs from west to east leading into the roundabout, and then again from the roundabout in a northeasterly direction. And the land transaction that we're discussing tonight specifically has to do with a section of road width in excess of what would have been the standard that would be dedicated by a developer, as well as a small piece of parkland. So going back to the previous slide, that green space above the roundabout there, which was planned to be used for park space per the secondary plan.
So, in March 2005, a parcel of land in East Font Hill is transferred to Font Hill Gardens from Gardens 4 for approximately $3.6 million. A portion of this property was eventually sold to the town for parkland and roadway. On April 2nd, 2012, the town adopted an official plan which included drawings with the planned land use in East Font Hill, including roads and parks. On March 4th, the town contacted Mammas, Evan Mammas, who was speaking on behalf of Denise Mammas, who owned certain property that the town would require for parkland and roadway. At that time, the town found out that the Mammas was not willing to sell the land only the portion that they wanted. They wanted to sell the entire property. So, on that same day, the town CAO contacted Font Hill Gardens owner, David Allen, to inquire if he was interested in purchasing the property with the intent that the town would eventually develop a portion of that as the park and road. So Mr. Allen went back to think about that. On April 24th, an appraiser was retained by the town which valued the 8.87 acre Mammas land at $1.8 million. On October 17th, 2014, Font Hill Gardens signed an agreement of purchase and sale to acquire the Mammas land. That was extended two times, as the date extended two times as he did his due diligence on the property. On February 25th, 2015, the town CAO sent a letter to David Allen to confirm their understanding of the Town and Font Hill Gardens with respect to the Mammas land, that a portion of that would be essentially purchased by the town. It essentially stated that Font Hill Gardens will buy the Mammas land and dedicate park and road lands early in exchange for credits with the town. Dedications are to be appraised per Parkland Dedication Bylaw 2005. On May 29th, 2015, after the two extensions, title for the full 8.87 acres of Denise Mammas land is transferred to Font Hill Gardens for consideration of $1.78 million. On September 8th, 2015, the town signed a parkland dedication agreement with Font Hill Gardens to grant 3.268 acres of the parkland to the town, 1.72 acres of which had previously been owned by Mammas. The terms were consistent with the earlier letter to David Allen. On November 3rd, 2015, the Mammas land is appraised at $1.14 million per acre. This was consistent with the Parkland Dedication Bylaw, where the appraisal assumed the land was at a stage for issuance of the building permits. On January 11th, 2016, the town council signs a roadway agreement with Font Hill Gardens. Font Hill Gardens is to grant road at a width that exceeds the municipal requirement of 22 meters. The town will pay Font Hill Gardens via municipal credits based on $300,000 per acre for excess road dedication. Again, a portion of this property was formerly owned by Mammas. On March 11th, 2016, the town treasurer engages an appraiser to complete a peer review of the November 3rd, 2015 appraisal of the Mammas land. The value of that came up with a value of approximately $1,024,000 per acre. On March 21st, 2016, council approved a negotiated value of approximately $1.1 million per acre and that the town was to proceed with the acquisition of parkland in exchange for municipal credits. On August 22nd, 2016, the town treasurer, in a written report, recommended to council to approve the payout of the outstanding credits in cash with a short-term loan. The reasoning for this was that there was an administrative burden and negative public perception of the use of the credits. Council instructed the town CAO to negotiate a discount, and we'll get into a little bit more detail on that later on. On September 12th, 2016, titles for the excess road and parkway park dedications are transferred to the town. On September 20th, the town pays Font Hill Gardens approximately $3 million for the balance of the outstanding municipal credits. So... Okay, as further background, with respect to the East Font Hill Development Project, the town entered into several agreements with several different companies, including the Parkland Dedication Agreement with Font Hill Gardens dated September 8th, 2015; the roadway agreement with Font Hill Gardens dated January 11th, 2016; the subdivision agreement with River Realty dated August 22nd, 2016 for purposes of developing an area within East Font Hill. There is also a subdivision agreement with Font Hill Gardens dated September 19th, 2016 for purposes of developing the East Font Hill commercial area.
So now we'll just go into a little bit more detail in regards to some of those agreements. So the first that we'll be discussing is the Parkland Dedication Agreement, which was signed in September. It was September 8th, 2015. So we've included just a couple of the more relevant terms from the agreement here, albeit a little bit condensed just to get them into the slides. But the first is, Font Hill Gardens agreed to grant parkland to the town which exceeded the requirements of the Planning Act. So, consistent with the Planning Act, when a developer basically develops or does construction, under municipal legislation, they're required to contribute either a percentage of that land for park space or if the town chooses so, then they would give a cash and lieu, which is to be used for park spaces. So, in this case, Font Hill Gardens agreed to grant the parkland to the town. The next is that the town agreed to credit Font Hill Gardens for an amount equal to the excess dedications, which we've been referring to as the credits or the municipal credits throughout our presentation. And those credits, per the agreement, could be used to satisfy any payments against the town. So any fees, costs, other amounts included... Or, sorry, including any parkland dedication fees, development charges, or application fees. Font Hill Gardens had the right to assign all or any portion of those credits to any one or more developers or builders according to its discretion. So essentially, these credits were considered transferable under the agreement, and they could be either given or sold by Font Hill Gardens to a third party at their discretion. The assignees were entitled to use the credits in the same manner that would be allowable by Font Hill Gardens, which is to say, to satisfy municipal payments in accordance with terms that I had just gone over. And Font Hill Gardens, in turn, agreed to communicate to the town the particulars of any credits that had been assigned to third parties for the purpose of administering those credits on the town's end. The town would determine the value of the dedication, so the parkland that they were taking from Font Hill Gardens under the agreement by using an appraisal that values those lands as of the day before the issuance of building permits. And Font Hill Gardens would prepare a draft plan depicting the municipal lands for purposes of the appraisal, pay for the appraisal, and select an appraiser which was subject to the town's approval. Just to expand a little bit, and we do touch on this a couple times throughout the presentation, but consistent with both the Parkland Dedication Bylaw of 2005 and 2015 as well as the Parkland Dedication Agreement, we understand that the spirit of the term... Dedication Agreement, we understand that the spirit of the term that values the parkland as at the day before the issuance of building permits is in order to compensate the developer for their opportunity cost of developing land. So, this is specific to excess dedication. So if a developer is asked by the town to provide a block of land that they own because the town, per their plan, desires to have a park space there, they compensate the developer according to the value that they would generate by having sold that land fully developed. So, in essence, what could happen is you could have a piece of land which would be appraised under one value in certain circumstances, but in this case, it should be appraised as at the day before the issuance of building permits, assuming that certain development infrastructure has already been established on that property. The town enacted a new parkland dedication bylaw on June 1st, 2015, and through our discussions with Daniel and Partners, we understand the following. The bylaw repealed the previous Parkland Dedication Bylaw of 2005. The new bylaw was enacted in response to changes in the Municipal Planning Act, and it was not a result of, nor did have any impact on the Parkland Dedication Agreement. Rather, we understand there was a term due to an amendment in the Planning Act which changed from having to dedicate a percentage for either residential or commercial land to adding a third possibility of dedicating up to 1 hectare per 300 dwelling units on a piece of property. So in essence, adding a third calculation for how much parkland would be contributed by the third party. And, as I had mentioned before, the intent of valuing the excess dedications as of the day before is to compensate the developer for opportunity cost of having developed and sold that land. Another agreement that was entered into by the town with Font Hill Gardens is a roadway agreement. And under this agreement, Font Hill Gardens agreed to grant to the town essentially a width of road, if you think back to that diagram that we looked at, which exceeded the municipal standard. So, if per the town's plans, they require a wider band of road, they can essentially enter into a similar agreement to the one that we just discussed. And in this case, they required a 28-meter width of road instead of 22 meters. So what is considered, in this presentation, the excess roadway dedication, is the difference between the 28 and the 22 meters, because that amount, or that area essentially of that rectangular strip exceeded what would be required under the town's official plan. As with, sorry, just one second here. As with the Parkland Dedication Agreement, the town agreed to credit Font Hill Gardens for an amount equal to the excess dedication using municipal credits. Those credits could similarly be used to the credits that were issued for the Parkland Dedication Agreement. And again, similar to that agreement, the town could, or sorry, Font Hill Gardens could assign these credits to a third party either by gifting or selling them at their discretion. The valuation of the land that was given for the excess roadway was different from the appraised value of the Parkland Dedication. In the case of the roadway, per the agreement, it was to use a formula of $300,000 per acre multiplied by the area of the width exceeding 22 meters of road. Now, we'll talk briefly about the appraisal of the Mamis land, which represents a portion of the parkland and roadway dedication that Karen touched on. So, we understand that the appraisal of the Mamis land, which comprises a more easterly section of the park and the roadway dedication, was initially completed in April 2014 by Ridley and Associates Appraisal Services, who were engaged by the town to complete that appraisal. We understand the land being appraised, or the Denise Mamis property, had a total area of 8.87 acres, or, and that led to a valuation per acre based on that 1.8 million divided by the acreage of 203,000 per acre. The current zoning of that land was agricultural. The appraisal was performed, as mentioned, on behalf of the town, and it was provided to Font Hill Gardens, which formed the basis of the price that they ultimately paid to Denise Mamis for that land. In order to appraise the value of the land as at the day before issuance of building permits, the town conducted their, or sorry, Font Hill Gardens, in accordance with the Parkland Dedication Agreement, engaged an appraiser, Mackenzie, Ray, Heron, and Edward, as, to appraise the land with an effective date of November 3rd, 2015. And what we understand is that appraisal concluded that the land that they were looking at, which they used as a proxy to value all of the parkland dedications, had an area of 7.8 acres. And they appraised that land as $8,900,000, or $60,000 per lot, essentially. And we understand that that appraisal used what's called an extraordinary assumption. And the reason that they did that is because that land, as I just noted, was agricultural in use, but they needed to appraise that land as at the day before the issuance of building permits. So what they did was they used a planning document that had been produced for the town of how that plot of land would be developed in accordance with the plan, and they selected one of the options under that plan of 148 lots, and then they used that to take the total value, divide it by the number of lots, and essentially calculate an area. So you can see in this table here, using 148 lots times $60,000 to 8,880,000, or rounded up to 8.9 million. The purpose of this appraisal, as noted, was to establish the value in accordance with the Parkland Dedication Agreement, and. So, sorry, that's actually probably all the information about the appraisal. So the key points are that the land was valued at 8.9 million, there were 7.8 acres, and essentially they established a lot value of 60,000 per lot. So, the town then engaged a separate appraiser, Ridley and Associates, to perform a peer review of the M R H E appraisal, essentially to take their appraisal and look at the assumptions and the inputs, and give their comments to the town. So, the peer review that was completed by Ridley suggested a value of 54,000 per lot, which translated to $1,024,615, or sorry, $1,024,615 per acre, suggesting maybe that that value was more appropriate based on their analysis of the appraisal. The town then took their peer review, and they provided that to Font Hill Gardens for comments, because there was the disparity between the two valuations of 60,000 and 54,000. We understand that the town and Font Hill Gardens essentially negotiated a value that met halfway between the two, which was $57,000 per lot. They used that $50,000 per lot to then establish a unit rate per acre of $1,081,538. And that figure was what was multiplied then by the acreage of the Parkland Dedication to establish the value to be paid to Font Hill Gardens with the municipal credits. One piece to note here is that while this land was valued at, as at the day of issuing building permits, the town anticipates that adjoining lands, when developers will come basically to apply for building permits, and it in turn triggers their requirement to pay cash and lieu or to issue parkland, that their land values will be similar to the land value per the appraisal, because they will be at that same stage, which is ready for the issuance of building permits. And so in turn, the cash and lieu that's paid to the town by those developers should be based on a similar appraised value. And we'll touch just a little bit now on the ownership history of the dedicated lands. We've talked a little bit so far about a portion of the lands being owned by Denise Mamis initially. One thing that we would like to talk about is, kind of to get a whole picture understanding of the parkland and the excess roadway that was dedicated by Font Hill Gardens, in terms of when the different parties actually took ownership of that land. So, this is an image that we didn't have up initially, but it, it does kind of portray the same features. So we have down here the road leading into the roundabout. So, part one right here, I know it's probably difficult to see for everyone, is that top band with the diagonal hashes through it. That piece right there, down to here, is what we saw as the green speed, green space on the secondary plan diagram. So that's what, these two part parcels of land are what make up the excess parkland dedication. The remaining pieces that we're looking at here, which are part four, part three, and then a small piece of road up here, are roads which were subject to the excess roadway dedication. And just to kind of illustrate again, this is the same image we had up before. So, there is this piece here, which is park space, and the darker green strip running up above that is also parked, and you can see the black is the roadway. So, this image here is, what I understand is called a block map, and what it's showing with one of the red highlights, which I'll point out specifically, is the full plot of land that was initially owned by Denise Mamis. So, if you look here, there's this rectangular piece here. So, that's the lot that we've been discussing to some detail that was previously owned by Denise Mamis, and was subsequently acquired by Font Hill Gardens. And as you can see, a portion of the excess roadway dedication, and a significant portion of the parkland actually laid on that road. So, of that image, maybe I'll just jump back to it one more time here. There are five parts essentially that are on this map. So if you can just try to bear with me, we have part one and part two are the parkland, part three, part four, and part five make up the road space. So, that together is the parkland and the road that was acquired by the town. Those parcels of land were acquired in two separate transactions by Font Hill Gardens. So, part one, four, and five were, in our timeline initially, were acquired by Font Hill Gardens in March 2005, so quite some time before these agreements kind of came to fruition. Part two and three, so, part two and part three, sorry, so we have a large piece of parkland, and one of the roadways were acquired on May 29th, 2015, and they are included in the portion of the Mamis land. So the full 8.87 acres was acquired for 1.789 million. The town assumed title to the excess dedications from Font Hill Gardens on September 12th, 2016, and at that time, the municipal credits, per the Parkland Dedication and the roadway Dedication Agreement, would become payable to the town.
So, the municipal credits for the excess parkland, again, was credits that were going to be available to Font Hill Gardens. So with respect to part one and two, the total area is 3.268 acres. And the consideration, or the municipal credits for the excess parkland dedication, at the negotiated rate would be the 1.081 million times 3.268 to come to 3.5 million in municipal credits. For part two, originating from the Mamis land, the 1.729 acres, the consideration, or the municipal credits, of the parkland originating from their land would appear to be the 1.081 times 1.729 equals 1.869. So what's happened here is the town provided municipal credits of approximately 80,000 more for the 1.729 acres than Font Hill Gardens paid for the 8.87 acres of the Mamis land. Now, this results from the difference in the basis from which the land is appraised, because when you're providing the credits, it needed to be based on the, as if it was ready for the building permit. So, the town didn't buy the entire Mamis property at the time, because the treasurer had advised that they didn't have the funds or the parkland credits available to do so. Okay, the municipal credits for the roadway. Again, the excess roadway consists, again, of the six-meter-wide row on parts three and four that you saw earlier, excluding the roundabout area. The consideration of those municipal credits for the excess roadway was based on the rate of $300,000 per acre multiplied by the area of the rows. We understand that the row area was determined to be .4586 acres, and based on that number, the calculated acres, the, the credit was 137,587. During our review, Tyler actually noted that the .4586 acres was miscalculated by a third-party consultant, which resulted in an overpayment of approximately $33,000 to Font Hill Gardens. And we understand that amount of money is going to be refunded back to the town. Again, this is just a picture of the roadway. So eventually, there was a transfer and some use of the municipal credits. It's based on that. We understand that the municipal credits available to Font Hill Gardens would have exceeded their needs, and this is based on discussions with Dave Allen, that they would have never been able to use up those credits. So Font Hill Gardens solicited developers to purchase its municipal credits at a discount of 5%. And Font Hill Gardens, when they did so, they provided particulars of the transfers to the town. There was a disagreement between the town treasurer and Font Hill Gardens with respect to how those municipal credits were to be used. And the sale of municipal credit by Font Hill Gardens consultant appeared to somehow raise public concern. Font Hill Gardens used, oh, sorry, two developers ultimately purchased municipal credits from Font Hill Gardens, which amounted to approximately $44,000. And Font Hill Gardens used municipal credits of approximately $541,000 that they would have otherwise been paying to the town. We noted that these were, these municipal credits were used prior to the conveyance of the excess dedication lands to the town, September 12, 2016. At that point, then, the town's lawyer confirmed to Font Hill Gardens that they could not transfer any more of those credits until the town received the transfer of the land. So eventually, the town decided that they would pay out these municipal credits to Font Hill Gardens. So, in a report on August 22nd, 2016, the town treasurer recommended that council approve staff to proceed with a short-term loan, an amount no higher than $3.5 million, for payment to Font Hill Gardens for the value. payment to Font Hill Gardens for the value of the parkland over dedication within the East Font Hill lands. We understand that the treasurer made this recommendation because there was an unanticipated burden of administering and tracking these credits. The use of Font Hill Gardens municipal credits by other developers would reduce incoming cash flow and make it less predictable. Paying out the credits with a financial instrument would make the cash flow from the developers coming in more predictable. So these were reasons provided by the treasurer. So based on that, council instructed the CAO to negotiate a discount on a potential payout to Font Hill Gardens. On a September 19th, 2016 meeting, council directed the CAO to proceed with the payout. We understand that the CAO was able to negotiate a 2% discount on the balance of credits to be paid out. The town treasurer indicated to council it would not need to borrow to finance the payout. It could be funded internally. So it was changed then from "we need to borrow money to do this" to "we can fund it internally." So on September 20th, 2016, approximately $3 million was paid to Font Hill Gardens by electronic funds transfer from the town's operating bank account. Okay. A lot of the questions we received from the public had to do with how was this land accounted for in the books and records. So we saw that as a common theme as a question. And I meant to mention earlier that we've captured a lot of the themes of the questions we received, and we received emails from approximately 50 different people. But some of the questions will be responded to in the report later on. So the way it was accounted for is that there was, and this is a net impact to the 2016 financial statements. So there was a land amount of 3.6 million. There was a receivable amount with respect to Font Hill Gardens' parkland over dedication of 3.6 million. And then there was bank, that's the cash out of the $3 million. So that's the impact on assets, was to increase the assets on the financial statements by about $4 million. The liabilities that were recorded was a security deposit and deferred revenue development charges of $563,000. Included in revenue was fees for a rezoning amendment of $5,000, fees for a planning application of $4,000, a debenture for $137,000, and contributed tangible capital assets of approximately $3.5 million. Just to note again, that $137,000 has to do with the roadway, of which $33,000 will be refunded back to the town. And to note, the $563,000 of deferred revenue consists of $519,000 of development charges paid by Font Hill Gardens and $44,000 paid by Font Hill Gardens' assignees, so the municipal credits that they had sold to other developers. And just as further note, the land in the financial statements is actually included under construction in progress, so you wouldn't see it sitting in capital assets or under land specifically on the statements. So for the year ended December 31st, 2016, the balance of contributed tangible capital assets was approximately $4.9 million, which consisted of the accounting for the excess dedications by Font Hill Gardens of approximately $3.5 million and the excess stormwater management pond dedication by River Realty of approximately $1.45 million. We were also asked, did the town comply with bylaws and municipal legislation? So we held some discussions with Daniel and Partners LLP. And based on that discussion, we understand that the parkland dedication agreement is not subject to the Development Charges Act. That was a lot of questions that we did receive. Therefore, it doesn't contravene Sections 38 to 41 or 44, which had to do with front-ending agreements, as questioned by the public. The municipal act contains specific legislation to deal with the issuance of debt. However, since Font Hill Gardens could not compel the town to pay out the credits under the agreement, the credits did not constitute debt. The town had broad authority to enter into the agreement so long as it did not contravene any portion of the municipal act. So at this point, I'm going to move into the discussion with respect to our findings on the September 5th, 2017 report that was done at the closed meeting. So at that meeting, we discussed the financial condition of the town. So we noted that the town went from a net financial asset position of 4.1 million in 2008 to a net debt of approximately 13.7 million in 2016. We looked at the debentures and the annual repayment limit. So as at December 31st, 2016, the balance of debentures issued in outstanding by the town was $21.3 million. The annual repayment limit is calculated based on what you could pay back in debt based on certain factors. So per the repayment, sorry, per the repayment limit report provided by the town admin, to the town admin by the ministry, the town's estimated annual repayment limit effective January 1st, 2017 was approximately $3 million. Per that report, that amount represented the maximum amount which the municipality has available as at December 31st, 2015, to commit to payments relating to debt and financial obligation. Based on that annual repayment limit, the ministry determined the town's additional long-term borrowing capacity was $37.6 million as at December 31st, 2015. So just to show where they stood, after December 31st, 2015, where they had an available limit of $37.5 million, they issued $27 million in debentures, which included $9 million in respect of the Pelham Community Centre, which was done in 2016, $5.75 related to Fenwick in 2016, and then another $12.1 million in respect of the Pelham Community Centre in 2017. So of that $37 million, $27 million was used up. As at July 21st, we had also understood there was some debentures that had been approved by council, but had not yet been applied for. So our understanding at that time, at July 21st, 2017, was that there was approximately $17 million of debentures that council had approved, but debt had not been taken on. And I know there's some confusion in the papers about this $17 million of unreported debt. There is no unreported debt. This $17 million was, what we thought at that time, was approved by council, but they hadn't gone to the second stage to actually go out and borrow that money. So there was no debt related to the $17 million. In fact, as an update on that, we now understand that that $17 million is approximately $9.9 million because a portion of that was the $3.5 million related to the municipal credits, which had been paid out of the operating bank. And there was other amounts that were, there was development charges that were used instead of debentures. So as at the current date, we understand the amount of debentures outstanding is around $9.9 million. In addition, there's $14.8 million that had been approved for the community centre, but to be issued in 2018, but had not yet been taken out. And that's just going to be a very short-term loan. So another indication of finances, on an annual basis, the town completes a financial information return for the ministry. This return is the main data collection tool used by the ministry to collect financial and statistical information. On an annual basis, the ministry uses this information to provide some financial indicator review to the town. And we understand this review is provided to the town treasurer. It is not provided to the CAO or council. So we've just got here some indication. What they use these financial indicator reviews is to see what level of financial challenge the municipality may have. And I note that this is from our report earlier, so it hasn't been updated for 2016. But for 2009 to 2015, there were seven indicators or seven ratios intended to illustrate the financial challenge faced by the municipality. The town showed a financial level of challenge of moderate or high on at least two financial indicators for the fiscal years December 31st, 2010 to 2015. And this chart is showing in comparison to its peers, where most of their indicators are low. Per our discussion with the ministry, two or more indicators showing a level of challenge or of moderate or high would typically prompt follow-up contact of a municipality by the ministry to discuss a review and to offer guidance to remediate. And any contact would have been done with the treasurer. So we also looked at reserves, reserve funds, and deferred revenue. What we were looking at here was in comparison to cash. So at 2015 and 2016 financial statements, on the table you can see, we've listed out the deposits and deferred revenue, the deferred revenue obligatory reserve funds, and the reserve and reserve funds. So in 2015, the amount was about $6.8 million, and in 2016, it was around $11 million. If we look at that in comparison to cash in 2015, there was approximately $554,000 of cash available to cover any reserves. There was also bank indebtedness of about $3.35 million. In 2016, there was cash of approximately $9.3 million, but $9 million of that related to the community centre, and it was actually kept in a separate bank account for that purpose only. So the actual cash available was approximately $258,000, and the bank indebtedness at that So I just wanted to point out that although the cash wasn't there to cover all of those reserves, there is currently no requirement under the municipal act, the town policy, or the applicable accounting standards, the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, for the town to maintain cash or liquid assets equal to the balance of the deposits and deferred revenues and reserves and reserve funds. We do understand that there should have been cash on hand in the amounts of the obligatory reserve funds, but this doesn't fall under the accounting standards. So the accounting standards in auditing financial statements are using the public sector accounting standards, where the municipal act may say that a municipality should have cash reserves to cover their obligatory reserve funds, but that wouldn't impact the audit. The audit is to show the financial statements as they are. So they did properly reflect the amount of cash on hand. Okay. So that's it for, do you have any?
So I think we're taking the two-minute break now just to switch the wire over, and then we'll hear the treasurer's report. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to hold the mic that way I'll make it a little bit easier for the folks in the back to hear it. I'm here to provide the treasurer's report. This is the agenda that I have for tonight: introduction, financial update, risk analysis, the financial strategic direction, and my closing remarks. the financial strategic direction, and my closing remarks. I just wanted to start off a little bit with my introduction. I am new to the town, and a lot of people don't know me, and I just want to give you a little background of who I am and where I came from. So I have over thirty-five years of accounting experience, nine years in public accounting, three, three years in a profit corporation, twenty-one years in post-secondary. I come, I just retired a couple of years ago from Niagara College. So with my background, I have a lot of experience in, uh, financial services. I was the director of financial services at the college for six years and seven years as the vice president corporate services. So I was responsible for the college's ninety million dollars of capital redevelopment. And I like to volunteer on boards, and right now, currently, I'm on two boards, one for the Hospital Foundation and the second one for Women's Place of South Niagara. So that's just a little background of who I am. I've been here at the town for three months full-time and three months prior to that on a consultant basis. Financial update. So we're going to talk about the current year's status, the Palom Community Center, capital projects, long-term debt, the cash position, and cash strategies. Current year's status, so we presented to council on November twentieth, the council meeting, the third quarter results. This is this year's actuals to the budget, and so far, everything is in line. The Palom Community Center, I wanted to talk a bit about the Palom Community Center. This is the, uh, the town's largest capital project in your history, thirty-six million dollars. And this slide here shows the budget amount of how this project is to be funded. We've got three million dollars from fundraising, twelve million from land sales, or just a little over twelve million that a debenture's taken out that's funded by development charges, and nine million dollars which is a debenture funded by a tax levy. So this is the plan on how to fund the community center. And so where are we to date? So to date, we have issued to over, just a little over twenty-one million dollars of debt. Donations, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars have come in. And we also have a reserve, uh, the Palom Community Center Reserve of a million dollars. And in this reserve is also where we allocate any of the interest that we receive on the debenture, uh, which is in a separate bank account, and it goes towards that reserve. So right now, so if you look at the chart, so, um, what's left to be done right now is the sale of the land. This is the East Fawn Hill lands, just almost nineteen, nineteen acres of land. And the, um, the land proposals were going to be received on December the fourteenth. So that's the last piece of the puzzle to fund the community center. Now, if you look at it driving by, uh, the, the community center right now is, um, is on schedule to be completely enclosed, uh, by before Christmas, and this was the goal. So then in the winter months, they can work on the inside of the community center. Just a little bit more detail here, uh, just shows you that the first debenture was issued in December of twenty sixteen, and the second one was issued just July of this year. And the expenditures to October thirty-first, twenty seventeen is almost, uh, is fifteen point seven million. So we still have about five point five million dollars in the bank right now, um, as of October thirty-first to pay for expenses. And the pledges committed to date are approximately one point seven million. So substantial completion and occupancy is still on schedule for June first of twenty eighteen, which is only six months from now. So this being such a big project for the town, the town has put a lot of controls in as far as overseeing, who's overseeing what. And so council has approved a oversight committee which is made up of two, there are two external community members, it's chaired by Bill Gibson, we have Councilor Kersey on that committee, the C A O, the town clerk, and myself are on that committee. And what our role is, is to oversee, to oversee ball construction, who is the project manager responsible for the project, to make sure that the project is on budget and on time. And I'm really, really pleased to say that it is. It's going exceptionally well. Ball construction has done a phenomenal job as far as managing the project and also doing some value engineering and reviewing the work of the architects that has enabled us to save some money. So the project, I'm really happy to say, is going exceptionally well. Capital projects, so decisions regarding the development of East Fawn Hill happened about a decade ago. So as a result, the town has invested monies to kickstart this development. These capital projects were initially approved to be funded through debt payment. The debt has not been issued to date, and current funds were used, and we'll talk a bit more about that, where the cash is, and you heard a bit about that from K P M G. The nature of these projects is such that the funds will ultimately be recovered from the developers when the subdivisions are developed. So what are the capital projects? Just to give you an update, where are we with the two thousand and seventeen capital projects? So there was about seven point eight million dollars that was approved for this year. And the third quarter report on November twentieth was submitted to council, and these reports are available, available online. If you want to go and see more of the details, please do so. Just to give you a little bit of a list of still what the ongoing projects are that are still underway, uh, the new road from Summerside Drive to Wellspring, I think people have, if you've been near there, you see the construction going on. East Fawn Hill, the sidewalks and the curbing, all that's happening right now. Maple Street Bridge replacement, hurricane, hurricane water main replacement, the Marlene Stewart Straight Park pool repairs, there's Tice Road work, road, road work on Rice Road, and just road repair work everywhere. So these are the current projects that public works, um, are still underway. So the next section is talking about long-term debt. So the existing long-term debt, and this is the most current figure right now, is thirty-three point, almost thirty-three point five million. And so if you look at the debt list here, and you'll see the year that the actual debentures were issued and the projects that they pertain to. So for example, there's almost like four million dollars of the thirty-four millions related to the two new fire stations that were built in fourteen, that, that the debentures were taken out in fourteen and fifteen. And then, of course, you have the Palom Community Center, and the, the two for the, for Palom Community Center that were issued. So this is the list right now of what we have, um, on hand as far as debt is concerned, and what will show up on the financial statements at December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. So future long-term debt. So what is the other debt that we have? So we have some projects that are underway, or some have been completed. They have been approved for debt to be taken out, but the debt right now has not been taken out. So we have, um, and we're looking at issuing this debt in twenty nineteen, where we're figuring out how much of this we really want to take out, and I'll, and I'll show you why. So we've got the pre-development costs for the new facilities, there's the Wellspring Way Sha construction, Maple Acres, this is the library, a portion of this was supposed to be, uh, debentured, and then the other part was coming out of development charges. The Palom Street hurricane stormwater, uh, this is more of the design for that. Summerside's east to Rice Road and Summerside Station to Wellspring. So these are some of the budgets right now of, um, what is some of the long-term, some of the debt that has been approved but not issued. And, and when it's not issued, it means it doesn't show up on the financial statements. So long-term debt, so the annual debt and financial obligation, this is what Karen spoke about, um, there is a limit, uh, municipalities determined by the municipal act. So the limit is twenty-five percent of the town's operating revenues less debt charges. So right now, for twenty seventeen, we have two point two million dollars of principal or interest that we can actually take out debt on. So the town has no choice but to stay within the twenty-five percent limit unless it goes to the O M B approval is obtained. And some municipalities have to do that. If they're going through a growth period, and they're going to exceed the twenty-five percent, but they know that once the development has happened, they'll come back and get, there'll be new property taxes come in to pay for it, there, the O M B allows them to exceed the twenty-five percent as long as they have a plan to show that it could be, um, recovered. So this is, um, I just thought it'd be easier just to show you by a diagram. Now, if the nine point nine million dollars of debentures was issued, if the full amount was issued, uh, this is what the graph would look like. So this, what includes in here is the existing debt, and let's say the full amount of the nine point nine was taken out for debenture. So currently in twenty seventeen, out of the twenty-five percent is what the repayment limit is, the maximum amount, we're at twelve point seven percent. So in two thousand and eighteen, it goes to fifteen point seven one, and the reason why it jumps is that in twenty eighteen, the principal payments of the, the twelve million dollar debt that was taken out in July actually shows up here in twenty eighteen is when we start paying the principal portion. And then in twenty nineteen, if we take out the nine point nine debentures, then it goes up to the twenty-two percent. And then you'll see it declining because some of the old debentures fall off the list. You eventually pay them off, and they come off the list. So if this is the plan, you could see the spike that goes up, and then you could see it going down, and then within ten years, it'll be below, it'd be about eleven percent. Now, if we only take out five million dollars of debentures, and you'll see, you'll follow this later on when I talk about the cash, um, if five million dollars is taken out as opposed to the ten, because some of the money that was spent, was spent that the developers, we're going to get that money back from the develop, the developers, and I'll talk about that, then maybe we don't need the full ten million dollars of debt, we only need five. What does the graph look like? And, you know, once again, the twenty seventeen and eighteen remain the same, and then in twenty nineteen, it jumps to eighteen percent versus on the other graph, it went to twenty-two percent. So you could just see how the graph changes just by taking out the five million. So this, so for, so this is just a visual, just to show you where the debt is now, and if we take out five million dollars of debt to replenish some of the cash that was spent on the projects, that was spent from the operating funds, what does it look like? And, um, and if we take out the ten million. Now, there's the fourteen million dollars that, um, that has been a pre-approved for the thirty-six, pardon, the thirty-six million dollars of the, uh, the community center. So when the community center was approved, um, and the funding went to the region, the approval was for the full amount. And the reason why that was done, but we only took the, the twenty-one million out right now, the reason why the fourteen million was approved, it was approved as a construction bridge loan. And what that means is, uh, because we have the land sales, and we weren't sure exactly when the land will sell, um, you know, is it going to sell, you know, will we have the money all in by February, or is it going to come in by June? And so because there's a timing period of the sale of the land, that it was important to, um, to get this bridge financing, that you can take the money out in-year, have it for a short period of time, and pay it back within the same year because you're going to have the land sales to pay off that amount of money. So it's almost like a continuous, it's a bit of an insurance to say, you know, just in case the land, the revenue from the land sales comes two months after when we have it in our projection, how are we going to pay those bills? Well, we can actually borrow from the, from Infrastructure Ontario on this called a construction, construction advance loan, and we could borrow from there and then pay it back right away. So they understand that sometimes, uh, during the construction period, that you do need a little bit of extra borrowing because you're waiting for certain revenues to come in, especially when they're contingent on land sales, or sometimes they're contingent on donations as well. So you can have a pledge of one point seven million, but it doesn't mean that all the money is going to come in next, in two months. Some of those pledges are over five years. So how do you close that gap between the actual commitment of the funds and when you actually need that? And that's why, you know, Infrastructure Ontario, which is the, the provincial group that's financing, uh, the debentures, they realize that anyone under construction has, has those periods that they do need some temporary borrowing. And, uh, and that's why the fourteen million dollars does not show up there because if it's taken in-year and repaid in-year, it doesn't reflect in your annual payment limit. Okay? So cash position. I'm just getting, just one second. For the last seven years since two thousand and ten, and we saw this with K P M G's report, uh, I picked two thousand and ten because this was the first year of the bank indebtedness. The cash has been spent on acquisitions of tangible capital assets of sixty-one million dollars. So for the last seven years, we've spent sixty-one million dollars, the town has spent sixty-one million dollars on assets, on capital assets, either, you know, capital projects, development, that's where the money went. So how was it funded? Uh, there was an issuance of twenty-three million dollars of long-term debt. So don't forget, this is as of, um, December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. So you won't see the, uh, the debt from the community center because that doesn't happen until twenty seventeen when we start to spend the money. The transfer from the reserves, grants, and development charges is twenty-eight million dollars, and then operating funds is ten million dollars. So that nine point nine million dollars is money that we took out of the operating fund to fund some of this capital, and we're going to get that money back, and I'll show you where it's coming from. So the projected cash balance at December thirty-first will be minimal again, and that's what it's been for the last seven years. So this is not new to the town. As part of the growth and the, the development, the cash balance has been in a, a deficit position. And right now, we're projecting, uh, an indebtedness of three million dollars at the end of this year. And we've seen that. If you look at the financial statements and you look at the report later when it's posted from K P M G, you will see the prior years that we have had bank indebtedness of over three million dollars in quite a few of the years that we've had there. So cash position, and this is the same, um, chart that K P M G showed us, so I just, I'm just doing one year. So as of December thirty-first, twenty sixteen, and these numbers come from the audited financial statements, we have deposits and deferred revenue, one point eight million dollars, deferred revenue, the obligatory reserves. So what are the reserves in here? This would be your development charge reserves, your gas tax reserve, and your parkland reserve. That's, that number is like three point four million, and then your other reserves are five point eight. So technically, what you should have in the bank account, we should have at least eleven million dollars of cash that makes up those balances. But the reason why we don't, right, the reason why we're sitting at one point five million dollars of indebtedness is because we use the money for capital, and we haven't issued debt yet, or we're waiting for the developers to give the money back, and, and I'll show you where that comes from. So if you look at the future financing to be received, uh, we have either long-term debt of nine point nine, that's the highest amount that we would take out. I showed you the two charts. It's either, you know, the ten million dollars here, or it's the five million, depends on what we need. But also, we have seven point eight million dollars that we have spent of our own money, but we know is going to be coming back, and I'll talk about that. So that's about seventeen million dollars that would more than replenish the cash that's needed in these accounts. So if you take the eleven million plus the one point five that's short, it's about twelve million dollars that we should have there, and this is where, where the money would be coming from. Okay? So the cash position. So as mentioned also by K P M G, that there is no requirement under the municipal act or town policy for the town to maintain cash or liquid assets equal to the balance of deposits and non-obligatory deferred revenue reserves. And for the obligatory reserves, we are required to have the cash. However, if the town is permitted to borrow against these funds as long as the interest is allocated, and the town is allocating interest to this reserve. So this is all temporary internal borrowing what's going on here. So when you... So the cash strategy. So one of the strategies that I'm looking at as the treasurer is, you know, how do we replenish this cash? Because I, because that's the goal, is to have those, the money in the bank that reflects those accounts that we need to have the money for. And so the biggest one here is ti, is timing issues. So as I talked about, there are transactions that have been done that we know that seven point eight million dollars will come back to the town. And a timing issue means that there was an outlay of cash in the present, but it'd be fully recovered in the future. So we have a timing issue here. Okay? Phasing in of capital projects, so this is another cash strategy, is that the capital projects for East Fawn Hill are being phased in over the next several years. So all the things from the original plan that we wanted to do, we're just taking our time and doing them over several years. The town is growing. Uh, so as part of the development of the town, uh, we currently have subdivisions under development. So we have the River Estates that, there's a hundred and twenty-four units being built, uh, the Saffron Meadows, sixty-three single units and a hundred and twenty-four townhouses, and the River Estates condo, which is a hundred and fifty condos, which are currently being built, um, are being developed. built, are being developed. And the total revenue from that new build is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that is new revenue that's going to come from that development. And that's equivalent to six percent of the 2017 property taxes. And so that would be new money that we would, the town will receive in perpetuity because it's new development, and that'll be added to the revenue for the town. Also, the development of land, so East Fawn Hill, about nineteen acres of mixed-use commercial residential land will generate at least three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of new property taxes. So once again, this will help to replenish the cash in the town. So we're in the process of reviewing all grant options, and especially for capital grants. We have submitted a grant application for the OSIF top-up grant of one point two million dollars for the Pelham Street storm construction project. And we're hoping to hear notification of that grant, they said mid-January of 2018, so in a couple, well, less than two months. Risk analysis. So what is the risk to the town for having invested its cash into tangible capital assets? So there is a value in upfronting the cost for the East Fawn Hill development for future development and growth, which is currently being realized in new subdivisions, as we talked about, commercial and residential growth. So the costs that are going to be recovered, and this is the number I've always been talking about, was the seven point eight million. So there's the parkland, there's three point six million dollars that is going to come back in cash and lieu once the land gets developed in East Fawn Hill. So that will replenish the three point six million dollars that was spent by the town. Stormwater pond, this is the stormwater pond in East Fawn Hill, and the developers are, will be paying for the one point four million dollars that the town paid for the, the overdedication? Oversizing of the pond, oversizing the pond, some new terminology here. And the Wellspring remnant land, this is one point one million dollars. As you heard, we have an offer right now for Park Hill to purchase that land, and that's where they're looking at the seniors housing to go on that land, and that money will come back. And then Summersides Road, there has been put a one-foot reserve on the registered property for the, for the one point seven million dollars of the cost that the town upfront to build the road, but it's coming back from the developers once they, they start to develop. So seven point eight million dollars will be coming right back to the town and replenishing the cash. So even though the money was spent, but the money was spent in advance and it is coming back. Will the property taxes be, will the property taxes be directly impacted? And so that's the other question that, if we look at the risk analysis. And we have made investments in our infrastructure to facilitate new growth. This will be repaid by the developers as discussed and result in new assessment base and property taxes from new residents. So I wanted to show this chart here. This is the cumulative tax increases from 2010 to 2016, and this is the 12 municipalities in the Niagara region. And in the, in this period here, from 10 to 16 in seven years, Pelham is still the second lowest in, in property taxes at twenty-five percent, when the average has been cumulative at thirty-five percent. Audited financial statements. There've been quite a few questions with regards to the audited financial statements, and I just wanted just to answer some of the questions that we've heard. As mentioned earlier, and also by KPMG, all the debt that's issued to date has been recorded in the financial statements. So it's all there. The town has had a net debt position, which means the liabilities are higher than the financial assets for seven years since 2010. So this is not something that just happened this year. This has been like this for seven years as part of the growth and redevelopment of the town. All the financial statements for the town in all the years have had an unmodified, clean audit opinion, which means that the financial statements are not materially misstated. And the last one is the town has always issued its financial statements in the month of June. Because there are two subsidiaries, the airport and the hydro, the town has to wait until their audited financial statements are done before we can consolidate with our statements. So sometimes there's a little bit of a timing issue that takes a little bit longer, and that's why the statements are issued in June. And the financial information returned is, after that, is sent to the ministry along with the audited financial statements. So provincial partnerships. KPMG talked about the ratios from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. We have been in contact with the municipal advisor. So every municipality has a municipal advisor that they work with. They look at your ratios, how is the town doing, they look at your financial information. So we've had an opportunity, I've, an opportunity to speak to our financial advisor, and we looked at our financial ratios, and we welcomed the advisor to come down to the town in January to meet with myself, with the CIO, and look at the town, and we also welcomed him to provide us with some best practices, and they were very pleased with the invitation. Okay. Financial strategic direction. So the financial strategic direction is we're going to be replenishing the cash balances, as I mentioned earlier. We're going to replenish them with the money coming in from the developers, and also we have to figure out what portion of debt we need to take out for the projects that have been completed and approved for debt. We are going to complete the community center. So June 1st, the community center will be completed. And we're also going to complete the town's development obligations of East Fawn Hill. So these are the, what the strategic directions are for the town. Strengthening financial policies and reporting. So these are the policies and reporting that we have some in place and others we don't, that we are going to be putting in place for the ones that we don't. So one is a reserve and a reserve fund policy, debt management policy, cash management policy, risk management framework, and update our asset management plan. So these are things that definitely going to be a priority for us to have. And closing remarks. I just wanted just to give, so you've heard a lot, a lot tonight. You've heard from KPMG, you've heard from me, and I just wanted to give you my remarks as the treasurer. So as I mentioned earlier, I retired from Niagara College December 2015, and I was off for a year and a half, and I got a call, you know, to come and, you know, take on the consultant position of the interim treasurer. So when I came here to the town, I, I just came thinking I'd just be here for a couple months, and then I'd be off on my way and, you know, do something else. But what I didn't realize and what I didn't expect was to find what I found at the town. Absolutely wonderful people to work with, and an absolutely wonderful community, a wonderful community here. And I think, so for me to come out of retirement, it had to be a really special place for me to come to, because Niagara College was a really special place for me to work, and I can't believe how fortunate I am to find another place as special as the college. And I have, I live in Niagara Falls most of my life, so I'm not a resident of Pelham, but I have friends and colleagues who live in Pelham. And I know that when I talk to my colleagues and my friends that live here, one thing that always struck me very, all the time it struck me, is the pride that people have in living here. And I thought, wow, like what is so special about Pelham? Well, I'll tell you what's so special. I've been here for six months now, coming here and being part of, you know, what this community is doing, how everyone's, you know, the town is trying to improve the quality of life for the residents here, the special events. I went to Summer Fest this year for the first time. This is a really, really special place. Look at those pictures. Look how beautiful, how beautiful this community is. And I just want to say how proud I am to be here right now as your full-time treasurer. And I look forward to working with the rest of the staff. I'm glad my team is here tonight because it is an absolutely wonderful team, the whole team here. And I just want to thank everyone for coming here tonight because it's absolutely wonderful to see such a wonderful turnout, because it just shows that how much you care and what you're interested in your town. I just wanted to say with that to conclude my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Teresa. We appreciate the update. Before we close the meeting, we certainly want to thank our presenters. So thanks very much, Teresa and Karen and others for presenting this evening. We want to thank E.L. Crosley for the venue, thanks to staff for the setup, thanks to WeStream for live streaming and the production of this, Riot Hill for the sound, and thanks to each of you for attending. Financial questions have been whirling around our community for some weeks now. Now that we have the facts, I hope that we can take the time to understand the information and make every effort to understand each other and to work toward a common purpose. We know the vast majority of people in our community want to improve the quality of life in Pelham, they want a vibrant, creative and caring community. Let's leave here committed to working together to complete those goals. And so with that, it has been moved by Counselor Durley, second by Counselor King, be it resolved that the presentation materials provided by KPMG, the town treasurer, be received and publicly posted, that the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the special meeting be passed, and that the special meeting be and is hereby adjourned. All those in favor and opposed, thank you, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.